So at this time, I'll call the October meeting of the Henry County School Board to order. I'll ask Mrs. Overby to check our attendance tonight.
Mr. Alford?
Here.
Dr. Devall?
Here.
Ms. Landry? Mr. Gravely?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Dr. Stanbauer?
Here.
And Mr. Zake?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Overby. The first order of business will be to approve this evening's agenda. Do I hear a motion at this time to approve the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor of this stated motion signify by our raising your right hand. Thank you. Take this opportunity to welcome visitors, staff members, teachers, administrators, students, and all of those who have come to be a part of this meeting tonight. We appreciate you being here. We're going to recognize several students, I think, and maybe some others too. So we're glad you're here to participate and observe your child being recognized here at our meeting for this month. This time, I'll call on Mr. Gravely to deliver tonight's invocation. And I'll ask Dr. Stanbauer if you will lead us in the pledge, please.
As long as our heavenly Father, as we humble ourselves before You, we want to thank You for Your grace and mercy that You bestowed upon us. I ask that You continue to bless us now and forevermore. I ask that You bless this meeting. Bless the decisions that made, that will be made for the uplifting of our school system. I ask, and I pray, that You'll hedge your protection to continue to embrace our children and all that we are responsible for. I pray, Father God, that decisions again that we make will be pleasing in Thy sight. For these things, I do pray in Thy Son Jesus Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is to take comments from the public. We have one individual who has signed up to address the board tonight. Come in, please come to the podium at this time, Ms. Landreth. Please keep in mind, this is a time for public comment. This means that we're here to listen to you, not to engage in a question and answer period or debate. Upon arrival at the podium, please state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you have agreed that you will exhibit respect for this board and its members, as well as the staff and students of the Henry County Public Schools. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please attempt to keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sybil Landreth, and I'm here to introduce myself as the president of HCEA here in Henry County. Along with our vice president, Ms. Dorothy Carter, we are excited about the beginning of this school year. We are hearing from our teachers, from our parents, what a positive beginning we've had. And we're excited about the adventures that we're going to all have in this community this year. Henry County's got a lot of good things going for it, and we are just happy, each one of us, to be a part of that. Thank you to every staff member, support staff, and each person in this room and our board for making Henry County a wonderful place to work and to be educated. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Ms. Landreth. We appreciate those kind comments, and we understand the position you're coming into. And we will look forward with working cooperatively with you and your organization to further the educational opportunities of our students and also of our staff, teachers who provide the work. Thank you. We'll move on this time to awards and recognition. Ms. Hatchett, I see your name here for about five or six things, so I won't introduce you each time. Just get going and keep going.
Yes, sir. I am very pleased this evening to recognize students and our school division for some really important accomplishments. Our first honor this evening is to recognize some very bright students from Law Park Middle School. As you know, their FFA team completes on a variety of levels. And this summer, our Law Park Middle School FFA Plant Science and Small Animal Teams placed first at the Virginia State FFA Convention. And we were unable to recognize them earlier in the year and evening meeting, so we asked them to join us tonight. Due to other obligations, there are a few who could not be here, but we are very excited to recognize them and call all of their names. So Dr. Devall and Ms. Strayer, I ask you to come down and present your certificates as they come forward. The members of the FFA Small Animal Team who placed first at the Virginia State Convention are Haley Chitwood, Claudia Phillips, Eliza Miller, and Abby Moxley. And you ladies, which is right here, we're going to take one more picture. And the members of the FFA Plant Science Team who placed first at the State Convention are Carly Ashworth, Delaney Burris, Mallory Kesar, and Abigail Mosley. Our next recognition this evening is another great honor. Through the hard work of all of our students and their staff members and families who supported them, we are going to present the updated plaques for our schools that achieved accreditation this year. So I'd like to ask the representatives from each school to come forward as we call the schools' names. Aston Elementary School. Campbell Court Elementary School. Mary Nissen Elementary School. GW Claver Elementary School. An official name for the first time in some accredited school. Nettowview Elementary School. Wren County Elementary School. Rich Angers Elementary School. Sable Elementary School. And Pennington Elementary School. Law Park Middle School. Bassett High School. And Longhampton High School. And you'll be hearing more about their achievements and what they've earned throughout the course of the new Virginia accreditation standards when Mr. Martin represents like.
Our third recognition this evening comes to us from the Virginia School Boards Association and the Governor's Office. As you know, annually, October is designated as BSBA Bullying Prevention Month, and that is something that we recognize in Henry County schools in the month of October, but also we participate proactively throughout the course of the school year by hosting activities. Things that we are doing in the Magna Vista Zone include PBIS at most of the schools in that area, and that will also spread to the other parts of our division later as we move through the course of the next several years. Also, at all of our elementary and middle schools, we're working with character education. We just recently had a speaker come in and work with students and staff at the middle school level. And we also have a report bullying link on our school division website and our school websites so that students can report anonymously or attach a name to that report if they feel they would like to do so. So I'm going to read that recognition. This is not something that we need to take action on. It is just recognition for the record. Whereas school bullying is a significant problem in the United States and Virginia, and whereas more than 20% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim, and whereas an estimated 160,000 students in kindergarten through 12th grade miss school due to a fear of being bullied, and whereas bullying can assume many forms, including verbal, physical, and in cyberspace, and can happen on and off school grounds, and whereas it is important for Virginia parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community, and whereas the Virginia School Boards Association has developed a model policy on anti-bullying to encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors, now therefore, I, Governor Ralph S. Northam, do hereby recognize October 2018 as Virginia School Boards Association Bullying Prevention Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of our citizens. And our next recognition is one in a series of two that we're proud to share this evening. And I'm going to ask Pat from Synergistics to come share a little bit about this particular award with you. It is one from their company.
Thanks very much. Ten years ago, in one month, this school district, Henry County Public Schools, engaged in an energy conservation program. Our company at that time was called Energy Education. So what's changed since then? The update is, we've changed our name. It's now Synergistic. But more importantly, I've got great results to report to the school district today. First of all, 27% reduction in use of energy over the last 10 years. That's remarkable. 14, all 14 schools in the school district have been Energy Star certified for the last five years straight. But more importantly, I think, is that you've saved over $5 million. And I've got with me Mr. Ken Atkins, who will share with you what that looks like.
Can somebody endorse the back?
So I wanted to thank the school board for having the foresight 10 years ago to look at energy conservation as a way to not just save the environment, or help the environment, but also a way of saving money for the school district that can be redirected from energy bills into something more important like academics. So thank you very much to the school board members who were involved then, and thank you for continuing to support the program over 10 years. This award that I have today is called the Chairman Sustainability Award. It's from the chairman of our board, Dr. Bill Spears, and you all are emblematic of that. 10 years of energy savings is fantastic. So in addition to that, I wanted to pull out a few people and recognize them. First of all, Dr. Devall, I know you were part of that original group that approved that. Ms. Strayer, I know that you've been part of the program in other roles throughout, and so I wanted to thank you for that. Keith Scott, if he's here. Keith, you here? There's Keith. Keith was the original education, or Energy Education Manager, since becoming the Facility Director. That's important because we work on changing people's behaviors and how they use energy to be more mindful, but also optimize the way you use your equipment. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Ken Atkins, who is your current Energy Education Manager. Ken is what we call the quarterback of the program. And, but everybody in the district's a player. So anybody who uses energy and is mindful of it contributed to all that savings in this award today. So that includes students, teachers, administrators, food services, custodial workers, everybody in the entire district, maintenance, and buildings and grounds, you name it. If you've used energy wisely, you've contributed. So I wanted to thank you all very much for that, and I would like to award this to Mr. Atkins on behalf of the district.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Following that same theme, Mr. Scott and I were privileged to attend the U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon Schools Awards in the month of September, during which Henry County Public Schools was named one of six school districts in the United States of America to have earned a lifetime award, and it's called the U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon Schools Sustainable Division Award. And part of the application that we sent in was our Synergistics work and the energy preservation that we have done. So Mr. Scott and I are pleased to present the plaque that we were awarded to the board tonight, and I'd like to ask him to come have his photo taken. Our last award for the evening. You all know, back in the spring, we read in the newspaper and heard in the highlights that we had some cyber superstars in Henry County schools. And tonight, you are going to not just see them, we wanted to award them certificates from the board, but Justin Compton, Michael Todd, and Colby Willard, who won a fictitious cybersecurity competition led by JMU at New College back in the spring, are going to also take you on a Google adventure in just a little bit, too.
We'll move on to Section 4, Information Agenda, and we're looking forward to this experience, I think.
We are too.
Ms. Hicks is going to tell us exactly what's going to happen to us.
Oh, you're going to love it. Okay, while I'm talking a little bit about the Google expedition we're going to take tonight, gentlemen, if you'll man your stations, if you all would like to participate in the Google expeditions tour this afternoon or this evening, please let Justin on this side, if you'll just raise your hand, so he can hand you a headset. And on this side, Colby, we'll hand you a headset. Please all, thank you. And Michael has you all covered. Here. I'll use my future voice so I can continue. So first of all, we'd like to thank you all so much for approving the purchase of equipment like this because it engages students, it makes lessons come to life, it is just super cool. Teachers, I have been in classrooms over the last two weeks, I have been in 14 classrooms.
I'm going to go ahead and go around.
Okay, sure. And we've done everything from a trip to Salem, Massachusetts, Concord, Massachusetts, in reference to the Salem witch trials and the American Revolution. And we have been inside the periodic table, we have been exposed to biomes, various biomes. And since I'm a former biology teacher, we've certainly been in the cell. We've been in animal and plant cells quite a bit. So you might not think, when you think virtual reality, you think tour, and I'm your tour guide, you might think social studies, you might think Eiffel Tower for a French class, and certainly those are some of the good expeditions. But since I am a former biology teacher, we're going to do the cell. So we're going to take a tour of the cell this evening. Hold on. Okay, guys, do this kind of troubleshooting in case people lose, hold your horse, yeah, hold your horse. In case we lose connection, if you're helping folks out. And this is what these guys do at Bassett High School. As members of my tech squad, they help me go into classrooms and troubleshoot connections and get people in the right app, and people, they do a lot of stuff, okay? They do technical, they do instructional. They are a great asset to what we do at Bassett High School, so I'm very appreciative of them. Now, teachers are using this as hooks to get the lessons going. They're using it to reinforce and deepen understanding of concepts throughout lessons. They might be using the headsets for review. So, yeah, take a look around. Are you seeing the cells? All right, so I'm seeing you on my iPad as your tour guide. I'm seeing lots of little smiley faces, and that's indicative of you being in the right place because every headset is looking around, and I see you moving around here. So, hold your horses, hold up. I'm going to start guiding you. This is like there's a script here for the teacher, and I can like point you to a particular component of the cell, and we will have a conversation about it. Again, it could be for review, we're getting ready to take a quiz or a test or something, or it could be that I'm just trying to get you excited about the cell and hooking you into my lesson. So we're looking at a nuclear core. I won't go into the details. Some of you may not be interested at all in that, but you should hear the comments from the students. They're so funny. It's like, oh, ooh, look up, what's that? You know, they're all over the place wanting to know what else is in that cell. So you're actually inside of a cell looking at the parts. Follow the arrow. And oh, by the way, that little, there's a button, it's black, it turns, that might help you focus because I was like checking the focus on those with my eyes and.
So follow the arrow.
So you might need to adjust the focus on that. And I see lots of little smile, and we would have like a deeper conversation about, you know, why is, this is the command center, what is it about the nucleus that makes it the command center, and so on and so forth. All right, now, don't get dizzy, and I do not, nobody's standing up to this, that's good. All right, follow the arrow. Oh, this is what I like, I like seeing. This is a structure called a Golgi apparatus. Again, I won't tell you. You know, we would be going into deep discussions about, this is disordered yelling, what does it do, you know, if we would be interacting with questions back and forth, it isn't where they are in the lesson. All right, so we're going to pause this scene and go to another scene. Hold up, pause. Let's do this one. So I have multiple scenes in the cell, so we're in a new scene, and I'm going to point you to this structure. We are in the inner membrane, oh, I heard it, of the. You're hungry, very good. And just so you know, there are over 600 expeditions already in the app, and this particular one is good for LS2, Life Science II, as far as SOLs, and it also highly correlates with Bio3, which pertains to cells and cell parts and their functions. So it's very, very much tied into the curriculum and what we do. And it's cool, right? I mean, how, I mean, you study cells when you're in school, right? Did you ever get to see a cell again in capacity? Probably not, it's pretty cool. So when you are not looking in your headset, if you would look, I have various pictures of what's going on at Bassett High School. Again, this is a chemistry class, we've had social studies, English, most of them were, since I'm a science person, to my science, you know, my people are like saying, what can you do with science? And they're on the hall with me, so we've done a lot with science, but we've also got the English and social studies. And soon to bring the words of foreign languages, the world languages. Okay, I think I've covered it all. I don't want, we could spend all evening doing this, right? This is cool. I will say, this is virtual reality, there is an augmented reality component that we're starting to embark upon that uses these markers and augmented realities to improve top up. These guys are helping me with that because we've had some trouble getting the android things to work with that, but we will, we will make it happen, right? Right, Justin? We got this. And the coolest thing of all, especially for high school, is there's something called Tour Creator. That takes it to an entirely bigger level where they actually create tours. You know, just looking at what's already done in Google Expeditions, you actually create your own tour with a nice 360 camera or even this iPad and just slowly turning. We could create a Google virtual reality tour of this room. We've talked about doing it for Bengal Tech to promote, like when we go out to the middle schools, so they can take a virtual reality tour of Bengal Tech. And one student came up to me today, and he said, we should do that for Metaview. He said, next semester, when I have your class, I want to go to Metaview and create a tour, a virtual tour. I'm like, great idea, let's do it. We will do that, that's our project next semester.
So this semester, Ms. Hicks, you have first block? This group is first block?
Well, I have Justin first block. Michael was actually last, our inaugural class last year, for second semester. Colby's actually not in Tech Squad, but he was instrumental in our success for the cyber competition. So these guys are friends, they know all that stuff. They know all the words and I do about that stuff. All right, so what questions do you all have for us?
So the class, what's, the class is called Tech Squad?
Tech Squad, yeah, they have a help desk. Yeah, Justin's our first block, help desk. He is the person who's there for people to come to, to get like help with connecting to the internet, or their computer's doing something funky, he helps them with that. Or iMovie, like second block today was full of students coming to them to get help with their iMovie's.
So Justin, do you help teachers as well as students?
Yes, I do.
Anybody who comes to us, right? Customer service.
So how would this be, these are used in lower elementary grades also?
Yeah, actually, they just got them. There was a few weeks ago, I think, they just got them, it was a big article in the paper. So we've had ours, I think we got them, what, mid-year last year? Yeah, like in January. So we've had ours a little longer. So they're in all schools now, which is really exciting. And that's why I was saying, I think by the time, like, if they're using them at those levels, by the time they get to us, we need to be doing the creation side. I mean, still the viewing side because that's cool and fun and applicable, but we need to like definitely get it to the creation side.
So does every school have a set of these, or do you move them around?
I think the middle schools just got theirs today.
How about careers? Do you think this, this class is something that you'll try to pursue as a career?
Yes, I do. I believe that.
Thank you all very much for playing along.
Thank you.
And if you'll just leave the headsets, I'm gonna stay, so just leave them where they are, I'll point them later. Okay, thank you all very much.
Mr. Minister, I believe you have the next item. I don't know if it'll be as entertaining as this one has been.
I cannot promise it will be as entertaining. I, I can only say it's informative, so, um, I'll give them just a minute here. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to talk to you today about assessments, uh, in Henry County and give you an update to where Henry County is. So over the past year, um, the school, or the state of Virginia has updated the accreditation. And based on the official state accreditation report from the Virginia Department of Education, fourteen schools are accredited and one is accredited with conditions. During the last school year, the state worked on the new model for accreditation for all schools in Virginia. And that model is based on standards of accreditation, performance levels. The first is green, which means we meet or exceed, um, standards or sufficient improvement. Level two is yellow, and we are near standards or making sufficient improvement. And level three is below standard. The standards of accreditation, when it comes to elementary and middle school, have to follow the, the following categories. Overall proficiency and growth in English reading and writing achievement. And that includes proficiency in progress with English learners towards English language proficiency. Overall proficiency and growth in mathematics. Overall proficiency in science. English achievement gaps among student groups. Mathematical achievement gaps among student groups and absenteeism. The same applies to the high school, but they have additional requirements. They have graduation and completion rates, they have dropout rates. Absenteeism again, and college and career and civic readiness will come into play effective 2021 and 2022. These are the standards for accreditation levels. And here you can see the actual levels of what green means, what yellow means and what red means when it comes to English combined rates, math combined rates. Uh, for the elementary and middle school, math combined rates are pass rates for the high school and science pass rates for all. It also looks at achievement gap groups, which are student groups in English and in math. It looks at the graduation completion index for high schools. The dropout rate for high schools. Chronic absenteeism for all. And once again, that college, career and civic readiness for high schools. There are three levels for accreditation. Accreditation is based off of the student performance. Accredited is when a school indicator or quality indicator is either at level one green or level two yellow range. Accredited with conditions is when a school has one level red. And accredited denied is when there are more than one red. The benchmarks for the state stayed the same this year. Seventy-five percent for English, seventy percent for math and seventy percent for science. As you saw earlier, our elementary schools that were accredited or acknowledged. And our secondary schools that were accredited were acknowledged as well. And we have one school that was accredited with conditions. Phil Collins, well, the school that was accredited with conditions, you can see right here, the English results were seventy-six percent, but with growth, they were at eighty percent. With math, they were at seventy-one percent, but with growth, they moved to seventy-five percent. And at science, they were at sixty-one percent, but use a three-year average to equate to seventy-four percent. In reading and in writing, you can see here the past three years for Phil Collins Middle School. And the new growth model, which is in place, is not incorporated in this chart. Overall, in Henry County, students in English performed at the same level as last year. Math dropped just a little bit, science dropped one percent, and social studies dropped as well. In comparison to the state, you can see Henry County is on the left and the state is on the right. And as we move throughout this new accreditation model, you can see as we are progressing in each category. When looking at our reading, reading analysis per, uh, reporting category, you can see how we stack up, um, across the last three years with black students, white students, Hispanic, economically disadvantaged and students with disability. Our black students remain the same, our white students increased by one percent. Hispanic had a drop of three. Economically disadvantaged had a drop of four percent, and students with disability increased one percent. When it comes to math, you can see right here that black students dropped, white dropped, Hispanic had a drop, economically disadvantaged had a drop, and students with disability had a drop. When looking at our math or our measure of academic progress, our goal for each grade level is to reach fifty-five percent in math. And in math, our kindergarten, first, third and seventh did reach those goals. You can see that fifth grade and eighth grade are very close to that goal. In reading, the story's a little bit different. All of our grade levels met their expected growth except for sixth and eighth grade. And eighth grade is very close in that matter. When looking at our on-time graduation, we rate, we rose one percent from the previous year, just like the state did. When looking at students with absenteeism, what those students look like. In Henry County, we had one thousand and three students who missed more than ten percent of, of school during that school year. And here breaks it down into what the demographics or what the student population looks like. Our economically disadvantaged is our largest percent with chronic absenteeism. Next would be our white students, followed by students with disability, uh, then black students and then Hispanic. So a division summary, ninety-three percent of our schools in Henry County are accredited. One school is accredited with conditions. We are making strides to close achievement gaps in all reporting categories. Uh, and Henry County experienced student growth in all schools. But we do have areas of opportunity in reading, writing, math, on-time graduation and attendance. In the areas of reading, middle school students started writing the first day of school. They also are reading nonfiction texts and pairing them with fiction tasks in the VDOE prompts. The middle school has also updated their pacing guide to, to work on spiraling back to weaknesses identified by the SOL data. Middle school students write to the Virginia Department of Education prompt each quarter, and that prompt is holistically scored and students conference as unneeded revisions. Data, data conferencing is taking place with teachers and administrators to enhance instruction delivery at the end of every grading period. All elementary schools are working on, uh, working with a consultant trained by Columbia University Teachers College to implement Lucy Calkins' unit of study for writing. And all elementary schools are implementing the Henry County Balanced Literary Model. Teachers are conducting small group and individualized conferences on SSR, writing and reading skills. Teachers are creating individualized learning plans for students in IXL based on that data from assessments. And division staff presented to English and social studies teachers on writing across the curriculum. The English curriculum coordinator is conducting data conferencing with English teachers during scheduled meetings. We're working with Virginia Training and Technical Assistance, or TTAC, uh, with all secondary schools to enhance instruction for all students with disability. And division and school staff will be going to VDOE trainings focused on enhancing reading and writing. Teachers are conducting in math, the strategies that we're working on. Teachers are conducting small group and individualized conferences on math skills that are needed. Teachers are, excuse me, creating individualized learning plans for students in IXL based on the data from the assessments. And the staff is working to, uh, on presenting the new standards for this upcoming school year that students will be tested on. The math curriculum coordinator is conducting data conferencing with students during scheduled meetings. And we're also working with TTAC to work with students with disabilities. Division and school staff is working with Dr. Dan Mulligan throughout the school year to create common, common formative assessments focused on improving student achievement in math. And the division's staff and school staff are working with Dr. Mulligan to respond to the data from the common formative assessments and to conference with teachers on ways to improve instruction that's gonna meet the needs of the students in math. When looking at on-time graduation, our short-term goals, analyze the current cohort data, have home visits, Success Academy. Grant funding will be used to enhance the learning environment, to make it more engaging. Project graduation funds will be used to help students who are struggling. Professional development will be provided to all secondary staff regarding the new graduation requirements that follow with the standards of accreditation. Long-term analysis of the current cohorts beginning in the ninth grade. Home visits and the continue of Success Academy. And we had twenty-three students last year take a class in Success Academy and graduate. Strategies for chronic absenteeism, we're gonna be conducting home visits. Parent meetings with those students absent six days or more, unexcused. PD for teachers on, on engagement in the classroom has already been provided and will be working on that throughout the school year. Principal and guidance will be working with the ninth grade cohort to ensure success throughout their school year. Be working with court services and truancy officers in the schools. And PBIS schools can implement, uh, and include attendance as part of their school-wide initiative. Are there any questions?
So is this, is next year the first year that the attendance component comes in?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, but they will use data from the last three years. We'll have a first year, a second year and a three-year average.
And that's K through twelve?
Yes, sir.
It's actually this year, so in the spring this year, all these, uh, criteria. As Mr. Minister told us earlier, in the, in the spring or summer report, Mr. Minister told us how schools, these, these principals were all told how they measured up on the old standards and the new. So they're all very aware of the, the new requirements. And we have been talking a lot about collaboration and critical thinking, uh, all the Cs that we talk about with our students, and I think that that's what we've all worked on up here, is that we have, we have been meeting together and collaborating not only as a division-level team, but with our partners in the schools to work on these strategies and things that we can implement in the school with our teachers that, because like Ms. Landis said, we have wonderful students and teachers that are working really hard. So we want to continue to provide the help they need and support they need. So it's been a very, a team effort to make sure that we can meet these. And we're still continuing to talk about a lot of these issues and how to make improvements.
So what kind of support do we get from the judges when we do take a student to court?
I can let Mr. Scott speak to that since historically he has knowledge as well as, um, Aaron here has actually been to court for truancy to represent us, so, Aaron.
Yeah, it, do you wanna address it or? At, at the point at which something has gone to court, um, there, it, as, as the judge likes to say, um, a elementary school student can't get themselves to school. So frequently, there is, um, something else going on, right? I thought when I started doing this that most of the cases would be high schoolers who just didn't wanna go to school, but it, it seems to be elementary and middle school students. And so the court has been involving social services. The school system will meet with social services and put together a collaborative team. We've also seen instances where the judge has decided that the custody arrangement is not working and has reworked custody. So it's really dependent on the circumstances of the family. And court services, working with David and now with Ben and, um, with the school faculty, make an individualized assessment.
And I can say, and I, and I'll look at this group right here because they're in these trenches every day, that they know that our teachers are phenomenal, but they need the students to be sitting in front of them to make a difference, and they work very hard to get the students in school. And it is quite challenging. And they do a lot of extra legwork and home visits already, and they're, sometimes they're not seeing a significant change in the attendance, even though they're taking students to court. And I see a few nods, so y'all, I'm glad you're here.
So who are making, uh, the home visits?
The principals, the guidance staff, the members of the school staff will be making home visits, as well as our truancy officers involved in some of those conversations and meetings as well.
We also have a, uh, on, on our floor here, we have a social worker that if it's a situation, that, you know, Sherry Bestall makes home visits, our social worker, Heather Brogan, makes home visits. I know our principals all make home visits.
I, I think there's, certainly we're aware of the connection between attendance and on-time graduation or dropout rate, whatever you choose to call it. I, I think that it's very possible, and I'm sure, I hope we're doing this, to identify potential dropout students as early as middle school. And if I've listened to your presentation, it seems like we have some, uh, we have some policies or some programs in, uh, in, in effect that work with those potential dropouts generally. Attendance affects academic success and academic success certainly affects, uh, on-time graduation and dropout.
Absolutely, and we know it's very important for them to be at school and for us to increase that engagement and making sure things like what you had experienced before my presentation, which was exciting, um, for students in our building. So we actually have identified students, and Dr. Boone, myself and Mr. Finney have been working on, uh, the students that are chronically absent and reach that above ten percent.
And also, I know our high school principals, we've had that meeting before, we've talked about dropout rate and graduation rate and how to help our kids get there. And they have both already met with the students that they have pointed out that they are worried about. And they've called those parents in, maybe the parent and the child about what they're missing. And then they try to use things like Success Academy or different avenues to get the child to continue to come to school or find a fit for that student. Ms. Gravely let us visit some students that she has that sit in her media center that do online learning because that's what works for them.
Well, certainly this attendance issue carries over to life after high school. If, if your attendance has not been good through school and you go on the job, unfortunately, it carries over. I, I don't know that the schools, uh, we can solve the whole problem. We need support from, uh, from parents, communities who, who expect and maybe even demand that their students be in school unless there are reasonable, uh, causes for them not to be there. Other questions or comments?
What is the standard for economically disadvantaged for the data?
It has to deal with the financial status of the family and the students, so.
Is it poverty rate, what, what, what's the definition?
But, um, when they identify the students that receive direct certification through, sometimes through TANF and things like that, that's where that comes in. We used to collect, you know, the free and reduced lunch forms and things like that to help us identify those students, but we no longer do that.
But as you see, Mr. Martin, that's our group that has the highest attendance problem. And, um, yeah, I'll go ahead and add that we are, we, like I said, we've been collaborating on how to improve attendance and having lots of conversations about that. We will, we'll be bringing something to the Board of Regulation soon about attendance because we know that that's something that we need to work on because we've had those conversations. Mr. Martin?
Other comments, questions regarding this issue? Uh, thank you, Mr. Minister.
Thank you.
It's, uh, nice to see that our, uh, we have all of our schools accredited, even counting one that is simply with a warning or with the, whatever the terminology was.
Condition.
And they are working extremely hard. FC and Ms. Penn is really focused on, on, she will be sitting here next year. And, uh, we all know that, and I know her colleagues are also very supportive of Ms. Penn and the work she's doing with the wonderful faculty and the students and families at FC.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to, uh, section five on this evening's agenda, the consent agenda. There are six, uh, items listed there. Uh, we can approve the consent, consent agenda as presented. Or, uh, if there's, uh, desire, we can pull either any one of those six out for individual discussion. I think it's important to always mention that, uh, all board members have... I think it's important to always mention that all board members have received these items, had a chance to peruse them, study them, and if they have questions, now would be the time to bring them up. We don't want to send the message that we just approve these things en masse without really spending any time considering them. So is there a motion to approve as presented, or is there one that someone would like to pull out for individual discussion?
Here it is now, Mr. Chairman, will we approve the consent agenda as presented?
D, the audit fees, I've been trying to do the math on this thing, and I haven't been able to come up with this. How do we?
Your question is in regards to section D?
Yeah, certain fees for the support groups.
Fees for the support groups?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I went back through and looked at previous years, how we did the split, and it looked like it was, I want to say a 53-47 split between the school and the activity fund, whether it's PTA or whatever. So there's a $15 increase in the amount per item that was under audit. And so what I did is I applied the same ratio and made up another. So we share, we share that, the cost of the increase there.
Right, okay. We just did 15, okay, because I, okay, all right, I'm good.
I think it's pertinent to mention too that since we required these and helped pay for these audits, that I don't think we've had a situation arise where there's been a problem during this time, since that's happened.
Yeah.
I know there were some previous.
That went on forever, and I think this helps catch things early on, some things I'm aware of, it does catch those early on.
And any mistakes, we've been able to address and to rectify those situations.
Okay, other questions? Okay, we had a motion, do we get a second on approving the consent agenda as it was presented?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, those in support of the stated motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. We move to the action agenda. This is the one we always look forward to. Approval of certain school board policies and regs.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. At the September 6th school board meeting, we presented a number of policy revisions during the information agenda, and hopefully you've had time to review those revisions since that meeting. Proposed policy revisions do reflect efforts to bring policies and regulations into compliance with your existing laws, or they've been revised for editorial reasons. The revisions are provided in board docs under draft policies. The changes are designated by highlighting new language and striking through deleted language. Policy revisions have been verified for legality by the Virginia School Boards Association. Are there any questions concerning the proposed revisions?
Well, I have a question, but I think we're going to take it up on one of the policies in closed session, is that correct?
One of those we might want to discuss, maybe it's a clarification in closed session. Is that, is that what you're?
Right, GBDA.
If you would like legal advice about it, we can do that in closed session. If you're not concerned about like any privilege issue, and if you're not discussing an individual student or person, we can also try to answer in open session. So GBDA is, does that?
GCDA, right.
GCDA, that pertains to hiring, I believe?
Yes, hiring of a felon.
And that revision comes from an amendment made to, I think, Virginia 296.1 in July of this year. And I'm not familiar with the legislative history to that, why they made this change.
I was a little confused by that as well, because there was no explanation of it with the policy revisions that came from the VSBA. But there was actually, there was actually a superintendent's memo that came out on September 14th explaining that that change was the result of a Supreme Court decision that came out in December of 2017, which is the reason that they had the date changed, that if you had people who were hired prior to that date in 2015, and, you know, they had already been working for your school division, and there was a little bit of leniency with regards to that, but that going forward, you would not be able to hire anyone with a felony conviction. I'm not sure that that answers your question.
Well, we probably need to talk about it in closed session, from a legal standpoint.
Okay. And I don't know that we have it on, but when we move to go to closed session, we should just add for the provision of legal advice.
Okay, so then should we, if we act on these changes as presented, should we, should we bypass that one and accept the rest of them until we go into closed session?
If you have further concerns that you'd like to raise, yeah, and then we can revisit that one after closed session, unless, Ms. Landis, unless you have a preference or how you'd rather, if you want us to do them in block afterwards.
We can, we can do them in block with that exclusion.
So we can, we'll do them in block excluding policy GCDA, and then we will act on that after a discussion in closed session. Okay, do I hear a motion for that process?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, that these policy changes will be made excluding policy GC, the change to policy GCDA. Those in favor of this motion signify by raising your right hand. Okay, thank you. We move to superintendent's report, Ms. Stray.
Thank you, Josh, and all. Members of the board, this is this month's report, including highlights from September Food pantry at the ready. Campbell Court Elementary School has stocked food pantries ready to be of service to the school families. Members of the First Baptist Church of Bassett have graciously donated food items to help this project succeed. The Campbell Court staff is grateful to community partners for investing in our students' future in this important manner. Hot dog kickoff. Families at Jerry Mason Elementary enjoyed kicking off the new school year with a hot dog picnic. The event gave parents, staff, and students an opportunity to enjoy time together as they collaborated to support learning for all the Spartans this year. Summer reading movie night. Students at George Washington Carver and their families celebrated summer reading in September by watching The Mouse and the Motorcycle. In May, students were given a copy of the book to read during summer break, and activities took place as school began to reinforce the message of freedom and responsibility presented in the book. Constructing vocabulary. Kindergarten students at Metavee Elementary are building their vocabularies. Students are using Legos to build sight words on Lego tables and collaborating with peers to discuss the words they build and see. Blockus math skills. Mrs. Peters' first-grade class at Mount Olivet sharpened their communication, collaboration, and critical thinking skills as they played their own version of the game Blockus to work on their number sense skills. This strategy is one of many that was shared during the Mathletes Program this summer that's sponsored by Eastman. Rich Acres Rover. The Rich Acres After School Robotics Club is in full swing. Students are using their innovative thinking skills to build a Lego rover. With the use of technology and collaboration, students are then able to program the rover to perform a variety of tasks. Fractions at Food Lion. Sandville Elementary held Math Night at Food Lion Stanley Town this month. Pre-K through 5 students completed an activity sheet with their families as they navigated the store. When their activity was complete, they received a prize and refreshments provided by Food Lion. Constitution Day, September 17th. Stanley Town Elementary students participated in a variety of activities to celebrate Constitution Day. 5th grade students went on a webquest adventure to learn about the Constitution, and 3rd graders wrote their own class constitution and signed it, and the kindergartners made patriotic headbands. Hands-on science. Students in Mr. Mayhew's class at FC Middle School conducted experiments using bacon soda and vinegar to create a chemical reaction. They were able to use the scientific method to make observations and predictions, form hypothesis, and determine whether the hypothesis was correct as they completed each step of the process. Oh snap. The students in Ms. Ford's 6th grade math class at Lowell Park Middle School used colored snap cubes to explore ratios this month. Students were given ratios to complete while collaborating with a partner, and were then challenged to write their own ratio problems for their partners to complete and discuss. Bingles College Night. On Monday, September 10th, Bassett High School hosted College Night for seniors in the area interested in taking their educational journeys to the next level. Representatives from many institutions across the state attended the event in an effort to draw the attention of future, the attention of future college students. Students and parents were able to collect information, have questions answered, and carefully weigh a number of viable options at this event. And this is the event that every three years it changes, it goes from Magnavista, Bassett, and Martinsville, and there was a very good attendance this year at College Night, Bassett High School.
All three high schools can attend regardless of where it's located.
And then, so next year, I think it's at, I want to say it's at Martinsville, I think, when it leaves Bassett, and then the following year will be back at Magnavista. Future focused. Melissa Farmer, Vice President of Sweet Bar College and a graduate of Bassett High School, recently visited with English 12 classes at Magnavista to talk to them about life after high school and how to appropriately plan for their futures. Students took advantage of the opportunity to gain insight and advice from a current college leader as they began their application processes this fall. Termites in the classroom, don't get excited, Mr. Scott. In September, biology students at the Center for Community Learning had the opportunity to observe animal behavior in the laboratory activity involving termites. Ballpoint pens use chemicals that inadvertently mimic pheromones to which termites are attracted to. Students tested a variety of writing utensils, such as pencils, highlighters, and markers, to determine whether those utensils harbored the same pheromones, mimicking chemicals as ballpoint pens. Now, I learned something this month, because I was unaware of that, Ms. Higgs, but I'm glad to know that ballpoint pen contains that. But that concludes the highlight reports for this month. Are there any questions on the report or any other reports that you would like me to discuss?
Any questions regarding membership, discipline, or fundraisers? Receipts, expenditures? Hearing none, then we will move on to matters from the board. Are there matters from individual board members to be presented to the entire board at this time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I am concerned about the low number of substitute bus drivers. Recently, the board, I think, made a wise decision, and we did raise the substitute driver rate to $64, I believe, is that correct, Mr. Scott? And we did make some progress, but I noticed on the personnel reports recently that we've had a large number of bus drivers retire, and therefore we've had to go to the substitute bus drivers, and they have become permanent bus drivers. Mr. Scott, how much money did we budget for substitute bus drivers this year?
We have $135,000 in the budget at the beginning of the school year.
Okay, so if we were to raise the pay up to 75, how much money would that cost us?
To go to 75 over a 10-month period would be $96,630.
So in other words, that's good news, we, we had a surplus in there, just to make sure we were conservative, so we could raise the pay right now and still have a surplus in that category.
Yes, sir.
Well, I've heard several of my board members talk about this here, I mean, substitute drivers are, they have to pass the test, they have to take the driving test, they're drug-tested, and I think we ought to raise the pay to 75 dollars. My understanding is the regular drivers make about $87 a day.
That's correct.
So they're, that would bring them a little closer to what's, what the permanent bus drivers get. Mr. Chairman, I'd offer a motion that we raise the pay for substitute bus drivers to 75 dollars a day, being the money's already in the budget.
I hear a second from the.
Second.
Okay, how does that, how does that affect a line, line item, category item on the budget?
It's within the same category.
It's within the same category. So it is simply a matter then of just making the decision to do it without having to do any type of amending to the present budget?
That's, that's correct. And we, I ran a few different models to build it out at different daily rates, and 75 dollars a day is about a 5.8% increase, and conservatively still leaves a cushion in that line item.
Other questions or comments on this motion?
So, I mean, we're talking about increasing the pay. Do you think that's going to attract more substitute drivers, or are there other factors that, I mean, you talk about, you know, being able to pass the drug test, being able to get a license, all these types of factors?
From my, the conversations I'm having with Mrs. Whitlow, we believe that this will help, help substitute bus drivers make the decision to continue to be substitute drivers for us. I think that it's an extra incentive to continue to do that, and we're hoping that that does draw more people into the service for us. I think right now, the, at 64 dollars a day, some of them have an attitude that they can take or leave that depending on the day.
And I'll say, I've probably heard more from bus drivers about pay than I've heard from anybody.
I would also say the Board of Shoe Vices has been successful in bringing in a lot of new jobs, and it's an employees market out there. These new companies coming in are paying big bucks, and it's going to drive everybody's wages up. So if you want these people, you're going to have to pay them. Now, I understand what Mr. Gravely's saying, that's not the only reason we don't have as many substitute bus drivers, but if you raise people's pay here, that will help.
But I'm not opposed, I'm just want to look at other, if that's going to do it, then okay.
I don't think it's a cure-all, like you.
Other questions or comments? Is this, I'm not opposed to doing this, in fact, I think it's a good, it's a good thing. Is this going to open the gate for substitute teachers to say, well, they raised substitute bus drivers, now maybe they ought to?
No, sir, I don't believe so, anyway. Last year, going into this fiscal year, we did address substitute teachers in the classroom, whereas we had not addressed substitute bus drivers.
Okay, any other, any other questions or comments before we take action on this? Okay, Mr. Zayer, your, your motion was to raise the pay to?
75 dollars.
75 dollars. Those in favor of the stated motion as presented, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
On a related matter, Mr. Chairman, we're also having problems with enough drivers to meet the daily runs during the day, and we have Obamacare or Affordable Care Act, whatever you want to call it. And it was mentioned in the, our last budget that we considered that we would hire some permanent bus drivers. The number was 10, and I don't think we ended up hiring any. Now, we do have some extra money in the capose bill that the General Assembly passed, and a recent board grant that was determined that it was 320,000. That number may have dropped a little, Mr. Scott, what is the latest number?
Yes, sir, at the time that we sent out the board grant, the 320,000. At the time that we sent out the board grant, the three hundred and twenty thousand was based on Dr. Becker's calculations over the summer. And to make a long story short, that was looking at getting the maximum payout for our Virginia pre-K initiative, based on the number of slots that we've used for that. We're not going to hit that full enrollment, and so, that three twenty actually looks more like two hundred and eighty thousand.
Right. So, I would like the staff to make a recommendation the next month, if you think we ought to hire two or three or four, I don't know, permanent bus drivers to help meet these daily runs. So, we're not, that'll be a violation of the law, or even come close to violating the law.
To clarify, you want us to make a recommendation next month for the number of?
Yes, I mean, we've got some extra money there, and, Ms. Strayer, I mean, I would refer to the staff's recommendation to see if we should hire a few.
And what we've been doing is we've been looking at this additional fund, additional funds that are coming in, also, as Mr. Scott said, where we're going to also lose some revenue that we were dependent upon, and some additional things happening in the instruction area. So, we are waiting to see about that funding, and once we do, we can make a very good decision. And you are correct, Mr. Zayer, that we realized we had this problem last year with our bus drivers, the fact that we're having to double up buses to take students home, and parents may be letting you know that kids aren't getting home till five-thirty or so, because as drivers can't come to work and we can't get substitutes, many of our drivers are being asked, not only do your run, but also put these kids on your bus and do this run too, or splitting runs. We've had all our mechanics driving pretty much on a regular basis. So, last year, indeed, we did try to do ten, we recommended originally in the budget, ten full-time positions. As we, as funding was spent, we went down to two full-time positions, and then eventually, you're right, we did not add any additional full-time positions. But we, Ms. Landon and I just finished talking about bus drivers today, and, you know, it is quite the dilemma we're facing, but there are others as well, so we can make a recommendation to the board on what we need to do, and as we're looking at building our budget about next month.
Mr. Chairman, just to make it official, I'll just make a motion that we ask Mrs. Strayer and her staff to make a recommendation next month, what you need to do, and we can take a look at our finances here over the next month and see if we possibly could hire a few permanent bus drivers. I'll make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Can, can that motion be that we're not telling them to bring us?
We're asking them to?
We're not telling them to, yeah, right, that we're not telling them to hire ten bus drivers.
No, 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 no.
We're telling you to analyze what Mrs. Strayer has, or I think what Mr. Zayer's saying is, we're asking you to analyze the shortfall based on that three twenty dropping back, and any other anticipated shortfalls, and then make a recommendation as to how many we could hire based on that, is that?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Understood.
It might only be two or three, but two or three would be better than zero.
That's right, yeah. Okay, so, Mr. Zayer has put that in form of a motion.
Do we need a motion for that, though? I mean, with the understanding that this?
Well, just put it on the record, make it official.
Well, Mr. Alker has agreed to second it, so I guess we have it. So, basically, what we're saying is, do your due diligence in terms of money we might lose and money we might not lose, and decide then what the possibility and how many could be hired, and bring that to us.
Yes, sir, we'll do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those in favor of this recommendation, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, update on meetings and events, I'm not going to go over those, they're listed there in your agenda. We'll make mention of the, the November meeting is at nine, the December meeting's another six o'clock meeting, and if you plan to attend either the State Convention in Williamsburg or the National Convention in Philadelphia, please be sure that Ms. Overby has been made aware of your desires and registration process. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for section two point two dash three seven one one, print A, print one, discussion and consideration of appointments, transfers, and reassignments. Section two point two, print three seven one one, print A, print two, Code of Virginia for discussion and consideration of special placement and non-resident applications. Do we need, if we're going to talk about that?
Yeah, let's add, is that, is it A three? And A three, the text of which I do not have in front of me.
It's A six.
A three for the provision of legal advice.
Okay, A three. Okay, same section two point two dash three seven one one, print A, print three, and that's, to hear legal advice, okay. Do we have a motion for that?
Second.
Okay, a motion to second to go into closed session at this time. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, we'll go upstairs for that.